Unmute, or when we're in public, come to the podium. Give your name and address to the secretary for the record. After the appellate's presentation, others may comment. This is videotaped meeting. It's important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions made by the commission are then forwarded to city council. Are there any questions? If there are none, the secretary will call roll call, and then we will proceed with our first item of business.
Since Cassie's just joining us, I'll do the roll. Commissioner Nash. Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Hanley.
Present.
Commissioner Zorko. Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Nightingale. Commissioner Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Dallas.
Present.
You have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
Commissioner Brayley, present.
I'll start again. The approval of minutes from the May 26, 2020 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve, or any additions, deletions?
I'll move the minutes, but I do have a correction.
Okay, and what is the correction?
Well, we should have a second for discussion first.
Second. Commissioner Dallas.
Yeah. Mayor Clark moved the motion, moved the minutes. On the paragraph five, new business, second paragraph, it uses the word affected, it's minor, but it's a definitional issue. The word should be affected with an A instead of an E.
I'll make that change.
Okay, that's in the second line of the second paragraph. All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to?
Excuse me, Commissioner Dallas here. I have another correction to the minutes.
Okay.
Under section 5B, election of officers, Commissioner Nightingale lost a T in his name.
Oh, yeah, I missed that.
Okay, are we going to have that corrected as well, I guess?
That's no problem.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Well, I just called the motion, called the question. It's already been moved and seconded.
Who seconded the motion?
Commissioner Dallas seconded the motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item is approval of agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Second, Jones.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, coming up to new business. We have case number J20-0019, rescue mission, City of Saginaw, at 1021 Burt Street.
Yes, this is Gail. I'm sorry, this is Gail Soule. I'm with Comfort Construction, and I am representing the rescue mission for this project. We are proposing to build a 5,000-square-foot, pre-engineered warehouse on the property adjoining where the rescue mission sits on Burt Street. That property is currently zoned R2. We did go through the process of a variance, and we're granted the variance to build commercially on the R2-zoned property with a 10-foot setback in lieu of the required 20-foot setback. The construction of the building is, like I said, a pre-engineered building. They have a masonry foundation, sidewalks, curb, parking lot expansion, and we do propose to run some landscaping plants, or could be fencing if required along the, I believe it would be the north end where to join the residential property next door. The building's use is going to be for a place where the rescue mission can accept donations from the area, and then in turn, go through them, separate them, organize them, and then allow individuals who need different items to come in and select from that warehouse. So, I mean, it's a big deal for Saginaw area as far as having a facility like that where they can... I'm sorry, it keeps beeping in and out. Is there any questions on the construction or the site plan on the property?
Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
The, I'm going to ask about the suggestion for a fence. Is there a reason that isn't actually part of the plan already?
No, we actually, the plans were drawn in with the landscaping along there, but I had spoke with Dan Streeter from the rescue missions, and we did discuss changing that out to a fence, which we both believe would probably be a better buffer than the landscaping.
Would this be a six-foot? How tall of the fence?
It would be your standard six-foot fence. A vinyl six-foot fence.
I have a question. Commissioner Moore. So does the rescue mission own that entire block?
Excuse me, ma'am, I didn't hear the question.
I'm asking, does the rescue mission basically own the majority of that block with except for some ratings on Genesee?
They currently own, I believe it's four parcels right there, and they have submitted the paperwork to join all four parcels into one.
Okay.
Question, Jones. When are you planning on starting the construction?
We would like to start sometime around the 1st of July, but obviously, we still have to, you know, go through this process and then the plan review process by the building department. So I'm guessing probably mid-July.
And if everything goes well, our, when's your completion date? When's your expected completion date?
Well, our expected completion date would be about three and a half months after that, so we would be into October, end of October.
Thank you.
This is a chair, I didn't expect a question. You know, you were describing the type of construction. What do you mean by, did you say prefab or precast? What does that mean?
Oh, no, it's a pre-engineered metal building. It's structural steel with metal panel, metal roofing, insulated roof, insulated walls, and, you know, windows, doors, I mean, we dressed it up.
Okay, thank you.
I had just a follow-up question. I know, and Cassie, I think you provided me the information, which I appreciate, thank you. On the 10-foot setback, I think it was to the northwest, and it looked like from what you provided me, that was on a street. Is that correct?
Yep, that would be the setback along Park Street.
All right, and I'm looking at the diagram, the aerial photo that we have, and I'm just trying to figure out where Park Street... Oh, there's a park avenue, but I think that diagram showed two entrances. Is there, are there two entrances to this parking lot? Will there be?
There, not to my knowledge, there isn't. There's one, there's just one entrance into the existing rescue mission, and then there is actually one into the vacant lot that we are proposing to build on.
Okay, I'm looking at, this was from the city. Let me see if I can maybe identify that so I can be sure. I just want to be clear on where that driveway is going.
The new driveway is off of Park, however, it is existing. And then there's another one off of Burt, but that's existing as well.
So there is one off both Park and Burt. That's what I'm not clear on, it's just.
That's what it looks like, they're both existing, though.
Which of the two is the one that was talked about, the turnaround?
That is not on a driveway, so that is on the adjoining property line, where the landscaping buffer is, or if they put in the privacy fence.
And that would, that be along Park?
That is not on a street, that's on, yeah.
All right, is that between the, well, I'm looking at, what I understand is the... Maybe I'm just not clear on. Proposed building, all right. And the parking lot is to the southeast of the building, is that correct?
Of which building, the new?
Of the new building, the new.
It's northeast, I would say.
Yeah, it's kind of northeast, yeah.
Yeah. Park kind of heads north and south, but to the west.
I'm sorry, which, what was that again?
Park heads kind of north and south, but it's to the west.
Northwest to southeast.
Yes.
As does Genesee there.
Yes, and the building is right on that street, and then directly to the east, and technically north is where the parking lot will be.
The parking lot that's shown in the plans I have is to the south. Okay, then there's a new, all right. All right, I see that portion now.
The existing parking lot is more to the south of the building, yes.
Ah, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Yeah, if you have the drawings with you, it's on page C4.0, shows the new parking lot.
Right, I do have that now. So the turnaround is where in all of this? That was talked about.
On the northwest property line.
All right, and that's just that area where people will exit, is that correct? Or that's not an exit?
So, Gail, if you, do you know what we're talking about?
I'm not familiar with this turnaround.
There's like a little, I didn't know what else to call it. It's a little paved area, so basically, the parking lot goes all the way to the edge of the building, to the northwest.
Right, getting that little bump out back there?
Yeah, there's a bump out that would be basically for people parked in those last spots to back up and then go straight.
Back, to back up and get out, yeah.
Yeah.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
I was trying to understand what you were talking about with the property line, the setback, and in the setback. That makes sense now. All right, okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Okay.
Is that, I should ask, is that where the fence will be as well?
Yes, sir, that fence would be right along the property line there as well.
All right, good, thank you.
You know, I just wanted to kind of talk about those entrances, because I made a couple donations to the Salvation Army, and that one along Burt is actually kind of like an exit-type of driveway. It's like a one-way to get out of the existing parking, and there's like a little drive-up if you wanted to donate items to the rescue mission right there, and basically food items and whatnot. Have any other questions?
I don't, thank you. Was there a motion on this yet?
So I wanted to clarify that. We do not, in the planning commission, it's different. Then Council Janet has told me to tell everybody, we don't make the motion until after everybody has discussion, because for a planning commission motion, it can have other contingencies and things like that that have to be discussed prior to the motion being made. So we do just have discussion prior to that.
Right, you know, I remember that from, you know, I've been on the commission since 2009, and basically, what we did is a presentation by the person that is presenting in front of us for the special land use, or in this case, like for the rescue mission. Then, you know, if there's any public that wants to talk on it, then they come up to the podium and talk, and then the commissioners speak and ask questions to the person that's presenting. Then a motion is presented, and then a second, and then we vote on it. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, very good. I'll move, if no one's got anything else, I'll move and approve it.
Support, Moore.
Is that you, Floyd?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we hear a second on that?
Yes, I did, supported by Moore.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's do a roll call on that, because I don't think we had, heard everybody.
That's with the fence, of course.
Okay.
I should make sure that my motion included the fence.
I will make sure the fence is up, sir.
Do you want me to do the roll call, Fred? Okay. Tom Brayley? Are you still on here?
We're muted, but. Park? I said support.
Brenda Moore?
Yes.
Fred Zorko?
Yes.
Penovia Dallas?
Yes.
Robert Hanley? Bob Hanley?
Yes.
Yolanda Jones?
Yes.
Yolanda, we missed it.
Yes.
Lloyd Clark?
Yes.
Okay. And that passes.
Thank you very much. All right, our next.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. Our next item is petition 20-04, public hearing for rezoning application for 3446, 3430, 3304 State, and 3325, 3307 Davenport, from B1, local business to B2, general business. Do we have anybody here regarding that petition?
Anthony Denha, on behalf of 3430 State Street and 3446 State Street.
And this is John Mose.
Okay, are you going to first?
3446 State Street, the former First Merit Bank, and 3430 State Street is the Times Square Plaza. Currently inherited by Family Dollar and Dollar Tree. We have about 12,500 feet of vacancy in that plaza, and the purpose of requesting from B1 to a B2 again is to allow for additional opportunities to seek tenants to fill that vacancy as well. I had the opportunity of meeting with neighboring parcels, 3304 State Street, 325135 Davenport, which is the Ramada Inn, 3307 Davenport, which was Stan's Lock Shop. All in support of, you know, to rezone with no objections. Application was filled out, was signed by all property owners. So it is my hope that we can get this rezoning approved.
Okay, does any?
Anthony, could you tell me one more time your last name and then the properties you own?
Yes, Anthony Denha. D as in David, E and as in Nancy, H A. And I represent the property of 3446 State Street and 3430 State Street.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Hey, do any of our members have any questions at all?
I do, if no one else has. Want to start?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I do understand the reason for the request, but I'm very concerned. Mr., Anthony, what was the, did you get input from all the residential area of people around, particularly to the south?
Residential?
Yes.
No, I didn't seek any, I didn't seek any approval from any residential people for the rezoning. I did speak to, like I said, the Ramada Inn. They're currently zoned B1, which is non-conforming. They should be under B2 because it's a hotel motel. I had the opportunity of speaking with the owner of Stan's Lock Shop, that is the other property owner. He had no issue or concern with getting it rezoned. And then lastly, it's a vacant parcel, and that was managed by, I believe, the Samaritans. Bob Gollan assisted with speaking to them. I didn't have a conversation, but they signed the application to be okay with us rezoning. And my understanding was that the city does not spot zone, so that is why we went to all the other properties to seek their blessing, and which we were able to receive. But I did not speak to any residential owners, because they're not part of that block.
I do, I certainly, I'm sorry.
So that you know, Floyd, everybody, we, that's what the city does. We send out public notices to every property owner and resident within 300 feet. I did get one phone call just asking for clarification, but the person who called was a property owner right there, and she was fine with it. She just wanted to know what was happening.
My concern is twofold. First, it is in the heart of a residential area. And the kind of properties or the kind of businesses that can be there include everything from automobile service stations to automobile truck, motorcycle, trailer, recreation or vehicle or boat showrooms, including outdoor storage or display, automotive service establishments, bus, transit, and train passenger terminals. And there's, most of the others, I don't have a problem with, but even permitted by special use are everything from adult bookstores to adult motion picture theaters, massage parlors, and a number of other things. Now, of course, that would include mobile home, excavation equipment, machinery, or farm implement sales. There are so many warehouses, distributing plants, freezers and lockers. There's no reason to think that that would happen, but that is not a suitable area for many of those, those kind of permitted uses. It's not suitable at all, given the residential area around, and then even the nature of the other businesses around, those are not suitable uses. The other problem is, traffic-wise, this is in the heart of a very dense traffic pattern. You've got Court, Warwick, State, Davenport. These are very heavily used, and if, now, probably the businesses that you might be planning may not be an issue, but my worry is the businesses that could end up there if we change this zoning. I mean, I have my opinion on it, and I don't know what the members of the commission's opinion are, but I am very worried that this, in the long run, would be a big mistake.
Commissioner Moore, Anthony, can you tell me, or do, has anybody, what type of business has applied to be in that building?
So great question. So I can assure you that we were not going to go after an automotive tenant, we're not going to go after a massage parlor. So when we, I'm not sure if you guys were aware of what that plaza that the former Kroger was in looked like prior to us acquiring it and redeveloping it, we invested a significant amount of money into it. At the same time, the two tenants that we have, they're Dollar Tree and Family Dollar, also have restrictions as to what specific tenants they would allow go in next to them. So we wouldn't do anything adverse to impact the property negatively by putting a business that would harm any one of those national tenants, because they are an anchor. As for tenants that we had interested in the plaza, we've had interests from a national grocery user. Prior to COVID, it was looking very positive, but as of now, they've kind of put the brakes on that. As for the bank building, we had multiple interests, it being drive-through user, coffee users, office use, computer repair shop. So it's users of that nature that, you know, are interested as of now. But we would certainly not put something in there to impact that property in a negative way left on the city. It's our name behind it, you know? We've owned part of the city for 40 years, and care about our community. So, you know, what we like to, what we'd like to put there is, is we'd like to fill it with additional retail, possibly a clothing store, a grocery store. As for that corner bank building, I've approached credit unions. We'll continue to approach financial institutions, major banking brands, looking to open branches, but credit unions have expressed some interest. So as of right now, nothing is concrete, but we wouldn't certainly do anything to impact the city in the negative way, especially the residential properties owning that property.
This is Commissioner Dallas. It looks like, I'm looking at the zoning information that we were, that were included in our packet, and it seems that all the types of businesses you spoke of, Anthony, are covered under B1. So I'm curious as to why you feel that B2 would be a good rezoning choice for that area?
That's a great question. I'll, we'll go to the zoning, and I will pull up where it is that I see could potentially be an issue. an issue. Uh, business school would be a potential. Um, we've had interest, um, from some of the charter, not charter, what are they, us? What do they call them? Drawing a blank. Um, similar to a Davenport, um, out of Southeast Michigan. I'm drawing a blank on them. Um, that was one potential interest. Uh, department store, we've had clothing stores such as, um, City Trends, uh, simply fashion have expressed interest. In fact, an LOI was provided by, um, uh, City Trends on the property, uh, prior to COVID. Um, trade schools have expressed interest. Um, so that's, you know, some of the things we're looking at, um, and why B2 would open up the opportunity for those as well. Thank you.
I just, I'll follow up with one question on that. Uh, the apartment store. Um, I, I don't, Cassie, is that something that's excluded in a B1? I, maybe I just, I'm not finding one way. Is Cassie there?
Commissioner, this is, uh, Bob Gollin. Um, yeah, the businesses that he spoke about, the department store and the, and the business schools, um, are included in the B2 zone. Um, the other point, um, I wanted to bring up is one of the points that's in the report is that the current, uh, zoning for the Davenport Inn, they're considered a non-conforming use under B1 zone. So that's considered a non-conforming use under B1 zone. So that would put them in a conforming situation, which would allow them to do more with their bill.
I, I did realize that, uh, thank you. Um, and thanks for the other clarification. I knew the school issue was in a B2, but not B1. I wasn't about sure about the department store. But the, uh, the problem is, uh, my concerns are the same. There's a traffic, huge traffic issue and a lot of the things that could be permitted, even if the best intentions are to not do anything that would harm that area, someone down the road may choose otherwise. And then we've now got a B2 zone that will allow a lot of things that we don't want in that area. That's, that's my concern.
Yeah, and I, I respect that and understand that concern, but the fact is, you know, it, that property at Bank Building, um, has been vacant now for a while. And at the end of the day, we're trying to fill that vacancy. You know, it's a benefit to us and it's a benefit, you know, to the city. So I don't think, you know, there's that, before that was a Dollar Tree and a Family Dollar. That plaza also sits back far enough with, I believe, uh, 208 parking spaces. So it sits back off that road, ample parking, you know, for an additional tenant to come in there. So from a traffic standpoint, um, we have one, two, four ingress egress just for the center alone and two ingress egress for the bank building alone. So from a traffic standpoint, I think the way the property is situated, um, we should be okay. Um.
I, I, again, I respect that. For what your intended uses are, I don't disagree. It's the potential for the future use that could put something in there that would drastically increase traffic or drastically increase or create harm to the neighbors. That's just my concern. If other, if other commissioners aren't concerned, then I, they, you know, that's fine, but I, I am looking ahead for the city and that's where I'm coming from. I, we, these are permanent plans. And, uh, once you have that B2 place in place, you can't go back and prohibit someone from going in there if it's permitted. And so if someone decides they want to put something in that we don't want there, it's too bad we're stuck and so are all the neighbors, so are all the residential people. And the traffic is now in a situation that's a problem far, even much more than it is today. That's all I'm going to say on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, you know, I guess my comment is, is that I, I take it that you want to basically, um, have a little bit more flexibility marketing the properties that you have. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, you know, just flashing back to when Krogers, um, occupied that area, I think the traffic there was much more than we have now with the two, um, Family Dollar and the Dollar Tree, correct?
Uh, well, I, so I don't have traffic counts, um, what it was prior to, uh, well, actually I do know the traffic count as it sits today. So on the corner of State and Warwick, you have, uh, 25,000 vehicles that pass that site a day. Um, the Dollar Tree and the Family Dollar are very strong performers. Um, so they draw a decent amount of traffic as it is. Uh, but that State Street, Davenport are, uh, highways or roads that lead you to 675. So they've always been, you know, decently, um, you know, you know, the decent amount of traffic that pass that site. But again, you know, I'm, I develop, I'm a developer as well by trade. So, you know, when you have a center that, uh, has, that sits back with that amount of, um, property and parking, I just don't see it being an issue, uh, with traffic personally. So, I mean, I understand where, uh, Mr. Floyd is coming from and obviously respect that, but, um, I, I just don't foresee that being an issue from a traffic standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the rezoning, uh, for the listed properties from B1 Local Business to B2 General Business?
Sorry Floyd, we need to, um, ask two more times for people to speak on behalf and then close the public hearing.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No problem.
Back in the saddle again, the first time in a couple of years. Okay, we, we will now begin the public hearing to allow rezoning application. Is there anybody here who would like to comment on this case? Okay, we will begin the public hearing to allow the rezoning. Is there anybody here that would like to comment on the case? I don't hear any comments. Do I hear a motion now?
Motion to deny the?
Um, Floyd, we always have to make the motion in positive and then we can deny it afterward if we want to do that.
Okay, I don't know if that's.
However, we need to also make a motion to close the public hearing first.
Right, that, that one I would do.
You're making the motion to close?
I'll make your motion. I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second, Moore.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, do I hear a motion to approve this, uh, rezoning from B1 to B2 for the listed addresses in the, um, uh, petition?
I'd like to make a motion to move forward, Moore.
Second, Dallas.
You're making the motion as stated, is that correct in the petition?
Yes.
And Yolanda, you were the second, is that correct?
No, Dallas was.
Thank you, sorry. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Do you want to do roll call, Cassie?
You're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cassie, would you like to do a roll call so we can get a, a vote on this?
Sorry, yes. Tom Brayley.
Yes.
Brenda Moore.
Yes.
Fred Zawarko.
Yes.
Fenobia Dallas.
Yes.
Robert Hanley.
Yes.
Yolanda Jones.
Yes.
And Floyd Clock. And then we have two absents, so. Okay. So the rezoning application was accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're back to the public hearing segment again. And this is regarding the proposed ordinance opt-in marijuana establishment. That's item C in new business.
We have an amended, um, I'm sorry, an updated agenda, revised agenda?
We have, well, this is what I got in the, in the mail. I'm sorry, do we have a revised agenda? Is this not on it anymore or not? I'm sorry.
Yes. Yep, sorry, uh, Fenobia is correct. We were going, um, we changed that, the C to the Saginaw County Jail Parking Lot Project. And then D will be the marijuana ordinance.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's no problem.
If I did, if I did, there were so many trails to it, I just didn't, uh, see that. Okay, so that is C, the Saginaw County Jail. Is there anybody here to present that?
Bob, but Mr. Bellman was here earlier.
This is Jeff Wood from the Spicy Group here as well.
Okay. Are you presenting this or Jeff, are you doing? Oh, here he is, here he is, Mr. Bellman.
Yeah, so this is Robert Bellman, uh, representing Saginaw County. This is a continuation of last month's Planning Commission meeting where we had presented a proposed parking lot on the existing, uh, or former jail site. It's an 80 space parking lot that would have entrance and exit onto Harrison Streets. And then there was a request for additional information regarding the number of employees, visitors, both for the jail and the courthouse. And that was provided to the city and I believe communicated by your planner via the letter that was included in your packet.
Does anybody have any questions regarding the information?
Mr. Chair, I do. Commissioner Moore, I, I guess I need clarity on what, what was it? Cause I see the package, but it wasn't in my thing, so I'm just really looking at it now. So I just want a quick summary of why this is back on the table from last time.
Well, I think the la, the last meeting, uh, if my memory serves me correctly, is, um, the actual number of parking spaces and who's intended to use it. Is that correct?
If, if I may speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead Floyd.
Thank you. It was a question I raised about what was included in the count for the conclusion that there is sufficient number of spaces. And two, the question of the particular use of this one lot since Mr. Bellman had indicated they weren't sure if it'll be, was going to be dedicated to, I think, the administrative building or it was going to be open to everybody. We have since received sufficient information regarding the nature of the campus count of, of sites or parking sites. Uh, and to back up, we, there was a motion to adjourn for the additional information, which was granted, to, to postpone. We have since received that information delineating the campus count without including street side parking is sufficient regardless of the use of the 80, 80 lots or 80 parking spaces in this particular, particular request. So I'm satisfied with the count myself.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just asked because I got on the call late last time. Um, and so I just wanted clarification. So I guess moving forward, we, we are ready to, if, if Mayor is satisfied, are we getting ready to make a motion or what?
I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Dallas. I have a question. Um, so what is the, who would be using this lot? I think that was the other question that needed clarification. Uh, the users of the lot, would they be jail employees? Would they be, uh, public, uh, government employees? Who would they be?
So if I may, this lot will be, um, access through a paid, um, parking system. So anybody who is willing to pay the fee for hourly rate can utilize this lot. It will not be dedicated to any one group. So if a county employee wants to pay, uh, the rate to park in this parking lot, they'll be allowed just like the public. We have that happening in our metered lot. We are moving away from meters and we are moving to a centralized gated access. So it doesn't matter how long you stay, you don't have to keep feeding the meter, you just pay as you exit. Uh, our parking lots, either on Court Street, on CAS, or now this proposed one off of Harrison.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just kind of went through my email, so you're going to have about, through all those lots, about 410 spaces, is that?
I believe the total count was 515, I think.
Yes, total count is 515, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve this agenda item?
Uh, so move, Clock.
Second?
One, more.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you want to do a roll call again, Cassie? Want to do another roll call, Cassie?
Yes, sorry, for some reason when I click on it, sometimes it closes on me. Um, Tom Brayley.
Yeah.
Brenda Moore.
Yes.
Fred Zawarko.
Yes.
Fenobia Dallas.
Yes.
Robert Hanley.
Yes.
Yolanda Jones.
Yes.
Floyd Clock.
Yes.
Okay, then we have the two absents, so that one is approved.
Wonderful. Okay, the next item now is D, and that is the public hearing regarding proposed ordinance, ordinance opt-in marijuana establishments. And this is a public hearing again. Okay, who's presenting on this? Is this going to be Stan presenting or? Did you hear me, Cassie?
We have John Stempel on the line.
Okay, John?
Um, if he wanted to give any kind of overview of this. I can go ahead and just talk about it a little bit. Hopefully you all had enough time to review everything. So this is, um, about a year ago, almost, it was in August. City Council voted to, and correct me if I'm saying the language wrong, Floyd and Blunt, Floyd and Brenda, um, but essentially postpone or, or deny marijuana establishments with a sunset of one year. but essentially postpone or, or deny marijuana establishments with a sunset of one year. So that city staff had time to do research and put together a good concrete ordinance to be able to really narrow down what we wanted and be able to pay attention to what other people were doing right early on, um, once marijuana became legal in the state of Michigan. So this is the ordinance that they have come up with. This has really been headlined by a whole group of city staff, including the city attorney, who has done a bunch of research on this. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here today, but we do have John. And Bob and I have both been asking a few questions and trying to get as many answers for you guys as possible. This will, after today, have to go to council as well, just so you all know.
That's a good summary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions anybody has?
Well, you know, I, I guess my question is, you know, I, I know we put a moratorium on this for a year before we can make a decision. And I guess I have a little bit of apprehension on where things are going to be located if this does get adopted, you know? I don't want, I don't want a marijuana stand on every street corner, you know, in the city of Saginaw. I just want to kind of think about what I've seen in Bay City. You know, it's not on the main drag, but you know, you go to one of the marinas and there it is, you know, you, you see an establishment there, you know?
Mr. Stempel might be able to best answer that one.
Thank you, sir. I finally figured out how to turn my microphone on. Thanks, Cassie, for jumping in. I couldn't find. So when we started laying out the map and our GIS folks started adding buffers in churches and schools, residential areas, the first map that dated based on the first area basically didn't allow any uses anywhere because of, because of all the, the different uses that were throughout the city. So I don't think you're going to find that having on every street corner is going to be an issue. The distancing requirements between each use or each building basically gives you maybe two to three on, on each side of town in the, in the business districts, depending on who, who buys property first and, and sets their, sets their location up first. It won't be a very concentrated use. You know, maybe in the future we'll get something different, but as a starting point, this certainly will not, will not turn Saginaw, Michigan into the marijuana capital of the world, so. But it does give some opportunity for, for people to establish those businesses and get things started in regard.
I think you'll have to call for more comments, two more times.
Okay, we'll begin the public hearing. Is there anybody here would like to comment on this case? This is the public hearing. Is there any one here who would like to comment on this case? Okay. We have any comments from our commissioners that all are questions?
Uh, yeah. Anybody, oh wait, I have something. Anyone else does?
Uh, this is Commissioner Dallas. I do have, not necessarily a question, but I guess just a comment. The state of Michigan has legalized the use of medical marijuana. And so I think it behooves us to have some type of language that helps us regulate these, uh, these entities. I think this is the starting point for us to, I, I think, put in those, I think, cautions to ensure these establishments are not near areas where we would not think that they would be amenable for public, our general public citizens, et cetera. So I'm, I'm glad we have the ordinance and I will continue to peruse it, so thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello? Hello, um, yeah, I got cut off. I was trying to make a public comment and I was unable to join.
Okay, and your name, please?
Uh, yes, Trevor Wiznuski.
Okay.
At 3435 Sheridan Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, is that a?
I've been having trouble with my.
Is that a city address?
Uh, no, that is Spalding Township.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so yes, my name is Trevor Wiznuski. I'm the president of Great Lakes Natural Remedies and we're a Michigan-based cannabis company. I'm a Saginaw native, born and raised on Warwick Street in the city and graduated from Arthur Hill in 87. My company has locations all around the state. We have, we own the facility that is just outside the city over in Spalding Township, where we grow and, uh, process, cultivate marijuana. Last year, I was one of the people that recommended to city council to opt out and take a year to figure this out because it's so important to me as a, you know, growing up in the city to make sure you guys do it right. I do want to let you know that we have multiple licenses and multiple municipalities all around the state. We have one in lotteries. We have one in first come, first serve. We have one in buffer zoning with limited licensing. And we also, also have licenses in areas where they green zone the properties. And I'm going to tell you, as a Saginaw native, my experience, every municipality that we have been in has been sued and several of them are still under litigation except for the ones that did green zones. There's always contention for lawsuits with buffer zones, first come, first served, lotteries and the like. So I just want to kind of end with a couple of quick comments. First off, that I would strongly, strongly recommend to the commission that you use a green zone approach where you have a set streets, between streets, on one street, you just contain everything and designate a blighted area of our city because cannabis companies will come in and redevelop it and improve the city. And then secondly and lastly, we have our place in Spalding Township. I offered to the city council last year and several other people to come visit. You guys need to come and see what it smells like. I mean, if, if you just delay this one month, come and visit us and see what it's like and see the smell, see the hydrocarbons and the explosion, explosive, explosive chemicals we use to help try to figure out where to put this in your city. I mean, we're right there, we're right next to you guys, right? I mean, we're a block away from the city for you to come and actually see it. And from what I've been told, it sounds like you're going to allow growing on the north and south side of, of the river around the downtown area. And you cannot mitigate, you can mitigate, but you cannot eliminate the cannabis smell. And that smell will travel up and down that river. And your downtown will end up smelling like cannabis, 100% guaranteed, if it's allowed in those areas, north and south of the downtown. So I'm sitting here to just say, in my experience, try to do a green zone approach and the next thing, come visit us. You can see the flower, the, the flowers, the cannabis, smell it and see what it's like and meet our staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
And sorry for interrupting. I'm having technical difficulties.
No interruptions at all. We welcome the input.
All right.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Moore.
Go ahead.
I, I would just like to say that one of the reasons why the council did not move forward, Commissioner Dallas is right, we wanted to study and we wanted to watch, that's why we said the sunset caused. Now, the, the position that the city has taken or that we have taken as counsel, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, is that we wanted to allow an opportunity for the staff to research and our attorney, and we did. And so I, I think that what is, if, what I understand is, is that our next step is to bring it to this commission. The commission takes it back to the council and then it goes to, correct me if I'm wrong, because we not said where we're period.
We, we do have, this is the zoning here. Ordinance that is being proposed.
Which is.
It does not have to go to zoning, it goes to the planning commission and then city council. That's the last step.
This, this commission is the one that has to decide on the terms regarding zoning that are in this document, the proposed ordinance. So that's why hopefully everyone read it. I, um, you are correct about the time, the, the one year. What hap, as Cassie said, we, we passed an ordinance saying there will be no establishments because you have to opt out. We opted out for a one year with a sunset after one year. That has been extended yesterday by three months because the timeline was so difficult with the COVID. So it's been extended only three months, which doesn't give much time. But, and the research issue was absolutely correct by Mayor Pro Tem Moore. That is why it was done. My personal opinion on some of the distances that are allowed on the fourth page, which is section 151 6011, I am concerned with some of those 100 foot distance, distance from a church or other place of worship seems awful small. And even the 250, I would have much rather have had 1,500 as the only two distances allowed instead of four separate distances. So you, commissioners, you may want to think about that. Do we want to accept those differences, those distances that are in that particular page and portion of this document? You have the authority to change that or to just deny that closeness or to agree to it. As far as what the last speaker, the public speaker said, it is a very valid point that, yes, these are not going to be odorless operations when they're growing. And as I look at the, on the last page, you will see what's, where they're allowed. And there is a color, color scheme showing different levels of establishment. John, do you recall which one the orange is the permitted use for?
So the colors are the types of zone. There is a chart on, um, these aren't numbered pages, but it starts on number two.
Page two.
That has the zoning classification. So in that orange, which is M2, it might have all of the manufacturing in there.
It's sort of hard to read it, Cassie, so I wasn't sure, but.
It's M2. So in M2, you could have growers of any classification, including excess growers, processors, retailers, secure transporters, everything, safety compliance facilities, everything can be located in that, um, orange color.
So what you heard the speaker saying was that that would affect the downtown, probably would at Old Town, and it probably would. So it is an issue and it was a legitimate question that he raised, but this commission needs to think about those issues as well. Counsel will have the last word, of course, but you are the commission that needs to, if you don't think it's a good idea to have it in all of those districts, you may need to make that decision to recommend it to council. If you're okay with what's in here, then you can recommend it as is. So my suggestion is you look at both the distance issue and, um, on the fourth page, which would be section 130, 153 600, 6011 B1, and then look at the, um, the districts and what's allowed in district and under section 153 609, which is, Cassie indicated is page two of the document, two and three, four.
Mr. Chair, is John Stempel still on the phone?
I am here.
John.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Moore for the introduction. I was just getting ready to speak. Couple things with the distances that are indicated in the ordinance. We, we, as I stated, we started with a, a number of criteria for distances from churches, schools, et cetera. And we, we kept scaling distances down until we got to a point where these uses would be allowed. My concern was that we would adopt an ordinance that had distancing requirements that would have the same effect as not allowing them at all. Our GIS folks, Jeff Popsick, um, did these mapping and, and they were presented at the strategic planning session to, to get the, the distances to a point where the ordinance could actually be, um, allowed these businesses to operate. The riverfront mixed use, which is basically both sides of the river, from the north city limits to south, they are not allowed in those districts.
Thank you.
The B1, B2 and B1A district only allow the retail uses. Retail uses typically don't, um, generate the odors because by the time they get to the retail uses, their product is packaged. It's the, the manufacturing, the processing, the drying, those are the types of uses that generate the orders, um, which we, in the ordinance are proposing to be allowed in the industrial districts that typically have uses that generate odors, um, automotive manufacturing and the like. Thank you.
Have any other questions?
This is Commissioner Hanley. I'm not quite clear as to what our responsibility is here tonight. I mean, it sounds to me like we have the responsibility or certainly the opportunity to rewrite parts of this ordinance. Are we ready to do that?
We, the planning commission can make recommendations to council.
Right, which means we can make recommendations to make modifications.
Yes, yes.
Are we ready to do that?
I'm sorry, you said you're ready to do that?
Are we ready to do that?
Did everyone have a chance to review it sufficiently? Maybe that's a better question. Or a more deeper question?
I think your deeper question is very valid because I reviewed this and I didn't go through it with a fine tooth comb like you have Floyd, and I really appreciate you bringing some of the points up here. I, I guess myself, I'm not comfortable voting on this tonight. That's my feeling because I really want to really digest this a little bit more.
Commissioner Dallas here. I concur with that. Cassie brought to our attention the chart on page two and page three and four, and connected it to the map on the last page. I'd like a little bit more time to actually review where some of the, what I would consider manufacturing processes would actually impact people who probably traditionally have been at the bottom. would actually impact, uh, people who probably traditionally have been, um, at the bottom end of the totem pole and not able to, uh, address those particular, uh, facilities in their area. So I, I concur with that.
I have, um, a, a question for Cassie or, um, John Stempel or, uh, or whoever. Um, what is considered a green zone?
It is an area on the east side of town that has been deemed to go back to nature. So you know, and I know I'm a part of this team, but I found it real offensive for someone to say, basically in the privileged area, you're saying dump it, dump everything on the east side. No, 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 no. I find that offensive. I also find it offensive that this conversation that we're all having now, whether we want it or not, they are going to smoke weed. They're going to get it and they're going to smoke it in our city. Now, I can tell you how my feelings were with this. I was torn. But I've been doing my research. I'm not saying that we should do it and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it. And that was one of the reasons why I emphasized let's opt out for a year, see how it's going so that we can plan on where we're going to do it. Now, council gave the staff out on, on order to go forward with it. When I look at the distance and I, no, no disrespect to anyone, if you go to other cities, if you've never been to another city where it is, it's sort of difficult. And even if you have been, it's still difficult. And I guess all I'm saying is this. Mr. Fred, okay, you don't understand what the green zone is. And so maybe, maybe it's time for the council and everybody to be transparent in this city and let the citizens know what is the green zone? Who came up with the green zone? And who lives in the green zone? Thank you.
Well, you know, um, I do know what the green zone is, you know, based on now what you're telling me because back when we rewrote the master plan, it was, um, part of, I do believe, anything north of 675 by the railroad area, if I'm not mistaken. But, you know, I, I was only asking the question if that were the same definition from the presenter um, to what we have in the city right now. And based on what you're telling me, that's what it is.
If I can interject here, Mr. Chairman, I'm not even clear that that's what he was talking about. I think he meant it though. But he was talking about green zones and that implying that there were green zones area elsewhere that they would do this in. I don't know if that's true. My, I agree with Mayor Protem that he was trying to steer things, it sounded like, into what we have called the green zone. And I agree with her, it's not appropriate either. Um, so it, it sounded to me a little bit when he was speaking that he was talking about two different things, even though he really only meant one. But when he did talk about the odor issue, that is an important one for our DDA district. And that's where, uh, Commissioner Dallas, I, I think, I, I concur with you that we may need to look a little closer at that point on where the M2 allows it close to the downtown or old town areas. So whether or not, I mean, I, I, I don't think we need to concentrate in one area. In fact, I, I prefer to have it spread out. I just don't think the distancing is adequate and that it should be a re- reduced number of distance, 1,000 and 500, 1,000 and 250, but not four separate distances and certainly not 100 feet from a church.
Mr. Chair, John Stempel here.
Go ahead.
Uh, the green zone that the speaker was talking about was not the green zone that we know here in the city of Saginaw. He's apparently still listening and, uh, um, texted me and said what he was talking about was a specific green zone for cannabis use, not, not related to, to, uh, the area that, uh, is, is known as, as the green zone in the city. Um, so just to clarify that, we have been, uh, as a part of our work, uh, the city of Saginaw does provide inspections and planning services for Spalding Township, which is where his business is located. Um, and he had no knowledge of, of our local green zone in the city. So just to clarify that.
So John, was he referred to the green zones as marijuana because marijuana is green and therefore where marijuana is, they call it a green zone?
Correct, specifically for marijuana uses.
Commissioner Bailey, why don't we change the name to growing zone?
Makes sense. I think, if I could say, I think, um, it was council member Moore. He had a comment from, um, who was that? Commissioner Ha- was it Hanley about, are we ready now? And, and, and Mr. Dallas asking, do we know enough? So I think there's a question of whether we should try and decide anything today or should we, should we decide to look at it closer?
Okay, my feeling is I think we need to look at it closer and table it. That, that's my feeling for the next meeting.
This is Commissioner Dallas. Was that a, uh, my motion? Table?
No, I was just giving, giving a comment. I just want to, um,
You can make a motion, Commissioner Chairman.
You could, at, um, at this point, actually, we need to close the public hearing before a motion is made.
Okay, all right.
Has it been called three times?
Oh, not yet, but.
I think it has. I'm, yeah. From my notes, it has.
Okay, so right now the public hearing portion of our meeting has been closed.
Oh, you gotta move. I moved closure of the public hearing.
Second, Jones.
All right, all right. And I'm going to.
Take a vote, take a vote.
Oh, we need a vote. Thank you. I'm tired. Um, I hear a vote to, um, close the public hearing. All in favor? I.
I.
Okay.
I.
All right, I'm going to move a motion. I'm going to submit a motion to table this for our next meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second, Commissioner Dallas.
Here, sorry to interrupt, but I, I think the appropriate thing would be to postpone the item and not to table it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I will, I will rescind that motion. I will put in a new motion to postpone.
Second, Commissioner Dallas.
All in favor?
I.
I. I.
Hey, this, this should give us a little bit more time to digest it, me to digest it. Um, I'd like to, you know, throw it off a couple of people that I know, um, what their thoughts are and their input and then um, we'll postpone it for our next meeting.
If I may, I would encourage everyone to have, if, John, I know you'll talk to anybody who has questions, so I would urge every coun- commissioner to have a conversation with John or Yolanda or anybody else who was on that committee so they understand what the committee was doing, that came up with the, uh, they came up with the ordinance, but also, you know, look at the things that have been talked about. And, and I guess if you have an idea of what needs, if you want to, if you want to suggest a change, you need to come back to the next meeting with that proposal or even submitted in advance.
Exactly.
We don't really have a lot of time for counsel after this.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, can, um, Cassie, can you just be directed what we need to do on this? Just give a clear understanding that we just provide recommendations to counsel?
We can provide recommendations or fully adopt it. Um, and then council will have the final say whether they want to take on the recommendations.
So as we review this and get a clear understanding of what we're doing, we can come with recommendations for the committee to consider?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That, that would be, um, Cassie, that would be like, you know, section by section. If, you know, if I had an issue like, you know, like Floyd, I'll use Floyd as an example about the distancing. We could say, okay, we can approve this, but this is our recommendation for distancing, correct?
Yes.
And make amendments to whatever this is. So they can see what our feeling is. Okay.
Yes, correct.
It should be given with an explanation so council will understand the reason the, the commission acted the way it did.
Okay. Thank you Floyd.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, John Stempel here again. Um, if any, I, I encourage any of the planning commissioners to contact myself or Cassie or Bob. Um, if there are going to be suggested changes to the distancing requirements, um, please understand that, uh, folks a whole lot smarter than me, um, work with the mapping and the distancing and the buffering. Um, and if anybody wants to see how the distancing, uh, affects the actual application of the ordinance, we can, we can have, uh, some of our computer folks put the map screens and plug in the numbers and show how the the different areas of the city are eliminated as those distancing requirements increase. So please, uh, please don't, uh, make changes to those distancing requirements unless you have good information on, on what it does and what affects the ordinance. Because essentially, if those distancing requirements increase, uh, too much, basically the whole city of Saginaw is blanked out with the distancing requirements and the ordinance therefore would be ineffective and basically useless because it wouldn't allow any uses anywhere in the city because of the, the size of the distancing ordinances. I think Cassie and Bob, you would, would agree with those comments, but, uh, please, uh, please get with us. We'll be happy to sit down with you and show you the maps, show you how it all works. Uh, we spent probably three, four months trying to get this to a point where it was, um, basically not opening up the whole city, but trying to control the, control the uses and, and be sensitive to all the other uses in, in the areas. And, uh, again, just, uh, contact us, Cassie, Bob, myself, and we'll be happy to help you. Thank you.
Commissioner Chair, uh, Chair, com- at Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Stempel. Uh, and in fact, it, it may be worthwhile for you to plan on having some of that information at our next meeting available. Um, so that if there are questions, those can be answered by, uh, someone with the appropriate mapping data that can be put on the screen. Um, if commissioners want to propose changes, um, they still should do that, but then once, so that every coun- every commissioner can understand what John is saying, we should all have that data available at the time of the next meeting so we can make an informed decision.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Hanley. I have a, uh, another question, a mechanical question on the next meeting. There are nine members here. If each of us, for example, makes one recommendation to change the proposed ordinance, are we, we're going to have to vote on each of those proposals, aren't we not?
Everybody will have to agree on all of them.
So majority.
Majority will have to agree, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Stempel, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, this, I need to ask Mr. Stempel a question.
Go ahead.
Was this not presented at our strategic plan workshop in January, this same package?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments? Looking at my agenda, you know, we had public comment that was over and closed. And our next agenda item is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Public comment first.
Oh, did we have public comment?
No, you had me hearing comments.
Okay, I'm sorry. Do we have anybody here for public comments? Thank you.
Uh, Trevor could speak as, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, um, yes. Well, thank you for actually hearing my comments. Um, it does mean a lot to me that, you know, you are hearing what I have to say a little bit. Um, I've been there, done that. Uh, we have 59 licenses throughout the state of Michigan right now. And, you know, we've seen municipalities get sued left and right over this type of stuff. And again, I welcome each and every one of you to come out and visit us and see how this actually works and the smell and everything else, you know, over the next month.
What?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Uh, maybe this, maybe Trevor could give us contact information so that we could make that contact if anyone wishes to do so?
Mr. Chair, John Stempel here. You'd like to arrange for, for other facilities or I think Trevor would be okay with that. Um, and, uh, sort of date and time for any be interested to, if, if that helps.
Yes. Yeah, that would be great. Um, you know, we, we harvest almost once a week and, you know, we can show you a lot of, a lot of action and show you what's going on, so, yep.
Okay, so we would contact who, we would go through John to get a whole view? Is that correct?
If John wants to, if, if John wants to do it that way, or I can give you my contact information.
Or John could arrange a meeting for whoever wants to attend.
My thoughts, we're just to have one date and time that, that could accommodate everyone's schedules, but, uh, obviously, uh, Trevor has a business to run, so having nine or 12 or 15, stopping by at any minute, it'd be better if we just set one or maybe we had an hour where people could stop by and just.
Okay. That sounds good. You know, if we, we can get either staff to figure out, um, if he can pass on a date and if we can, 10 will be there.
We would.
Sounds good.
City council would provide you with that, uh, that date and time as well.
All right, thank you.
Now, if there's no more public comment?
No, is there any more public?
Yeah, I, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
For public comment? Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Wonderful. Yeah, I just want to say, uh, obviously listening in, my experience, uh, I know Trevor has 59 licenses, what have you. Uh, my experience has been heavily on the retail side. I've seen these retail establishments. I happen to be landlord to a retail establishment in Lansing, Michigan, which is in fact in a good location in a, what you would call a standard commercial business location. Um, from a retail perspective, there's no smell that emits from it. Um, uh, company that, which I am landlord for is the largest in the state of Michigan. Uh, they put a lot of money. Uh, this particular building was a, uh, ground up new construction. Um, so I guess my point to all of you is it's, it's important to pay attention to, uh, what's already existing a- as, uh, Brendan Moore suggested, um, and, and not when people try to come out and maybe do a little bit of stare tactics about getting sued in green zones and maybe, uh, lower income areas. I, uh, I've obviously born and raised in the Saginaw area, uh, familiar with, uh, the work that the zoning commission's done. John Stempel and all of them, I'm sure, are far, uh, dealing with far truly intelligent people who know what they're doing. And it seems that looking at the ordinance that's getting proposed, um, it seems to be in line with other municipalities like Lansing, um, has done. And I, and I'm, you know, I like what I see. So I just wanted to let you folks know my input on, uh, on that specifically, especially from a retail perspective.
Thanks, Robert. Can you tell us who you're with for the minutes or property owner or?
Yeah, uh, sure. But one of the names of that company is a property in the city of Saginaw is Art Holdings.
Okay.
Specifically, yep.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any more public comments? Okay, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So, more, more.
Second? All three.